Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So. The village visitor's grant is a.
Okay.
Last two weeks ago. So we're going to stay with. Did you hear that story? Isn't isn't this one we did last year?
Last two weeks ago.
No, you're talking about this one.
Oh, and then you just.
No, so I think I think it's two weeks ago. Is it? I think wasn't it two weeks ago that?
Yeah.
We asked for approval to write the grant? And then this one's the acceptance of the grant?
Nate, can you can you pull up the? Last two weeks ago agenda?
And then this one is. This one's a new grant.
But yeah, those are both new and we're gonna wait. We 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 don't have to weigh the rule because we're gonna come back. But let's check the language.
Yeah. Because I think. This one. God, now I can't remember.
I know.
They all sound the same.
I do.
But this one, I think, was like a consent to write it. And then.
I'm writing it.
Yep.
So so what we did. Is we approved the contract.
That.
That this grant was going to.
Right.
But.
That was just the contract. I think it was just the contract.
From the children, from from the national, from the national.
We approved the.
Alliance ratting the amount of.
Yeah, we approved it in the mail.
Oh, so if you're good with it, I'll.
Yeah.
As continued upon the seeds, the re the receipt of the funds for the D M R. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the vice mayor. But I'm just don't make it, we're trying to keep everything fast, so it's not.
Yeah, so it's just this one and then chunks.
Yeah.
Which I didn't get a printout of chunks, which is.
You you.
Yes. What's that? Yes, this year, but but next year, we're gonna change that up.
It's a resolution.
This is just for the for this year, next year, we're gonna we're gonna make that change. But uh but we didn't want to have. Have this year lead into next year. Okay.
Good, thank you.
So we're good, we're good.
And then here's here's the other.
Ah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll. We kind of approved it with that contract.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's not read it back. Thank you.
Makes it even quicker. You know, I was gonna get with you, I know you're super busy, I could do like. For some reason. I can't attach anything on my agenda.
Okay. Yeah, we'll show you how to do that.
Yeah, they well, I know about it, they just won't do it.
Yeah, yours yours, I can see them there, but I can't access them.
Well, and and so like, the only way I can even get it to attach is if I scan some. But like, these things, like if I say I download it and try to attach the downloaded document, it won't even be attached.
And you should be able to attach like a Word document.
Yeah.
In Word, T P F, or.
It's just, I don't know, I have to get with you to log in some time. I'm doing so long.
We can do a lot of it. I don't want you to, I mean, I mean, we have the finals.
Hey, and then Paul, it's all right, after I present those two things, I need to get.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. And unless anybody starts like. Okay.
Dear Heavenly Father, and thank you, Lord, for this evening and the opportunity to serve the City of Globe. We ask that you bless this meeting. And Globe City Council's decisions are made. We thank you for this community and the families that live and work here. We pray this evening for healing for those who are sick and comfort for those who are brokenhearted. Thank you for each department that represents the City of Globe, and we pray that you protect each individual who labors to preserve our quality of life. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Yeah.
Jesse, do you want to do this one? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
From here, we'll go on to summary of current events. And we'll start with Mario.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to give a shout out. Uh. On Saturday, my parents in Miami. Uh, lost their home to a fire. Two structures and a thirty foot RV were lost in a wind driven fire on Saturday. Luckily, uh, my parents actually were at Haven, and my mother is receiving physical therapy. And my father has been staying with her. Haven may be arranged and so that could. But I had to double check when I got the note. Um, and uh, Mayor Gamaris called. And they checked, and yes, they were at Haven, so no doubt from small papers. Uh. Home homes are a total loss. Um, really good thing is they got insurance. Uh, the RV is a total loss. And Globe Fire responded with a motor truck. Thank you, Gary and your staff for your work. I need to thank all the response agencies that responded that day, including the internal companies. And of course, it's from Miami PD, another person off of uh, town government in Miami. It was a windy wind fire event. Heck of a way to kick off a fire season moving my parents' house.
Is that my car?
It is one of the biggest. And so the caution to all of you out there, be very careful with fire, be sure. You guys can have some beautiful floral displays throughout the scene. But that's a hint of how bad the fire season could be. So I ask you to be very careful with fire out there when it's hard to feel it, or just a simple camping moment, be careful. It runs as a good in this particular case. Um. In the history of Globe and Miami, there are notes about the fire running through whole neighborhoods. Because the equipment and technology wasn't there, they didn't want it fast enough to. But there were, I counted three fire trucks there. And ancillary equipment and enough personnel to get the job done, best possible effort. I would thank you for your efforts. Uh, while we have refining, uh, they are looking at their options. And um. They'll be moved in with me at the end of the week, it will be discharged for review. And the trailer I live in at Globe Global Park is not actually set up for a handicap person, so. It's all we can have. It's kind of kind of nice, so if it's almost family, at least three of us will be under one roof again. I thank uh, all the people who have contacted me and offered help. All of you out there, Zapples. Um, we pulled together, so I want to thank you for all of your kind thoughts. I think we'll find one that'll be fun. Um, Crowley, I can say that has married seventy three years. And they have faced adversity throughout their lives. This is just another day of. Zillion stuff. Thank you all for your kind thoughts and your smart show, and thank you all for everything you've offered. Home calls and all for sale. That's all I have, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, brother. Really?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to offer my um. My sincerest regrets for your loss right now. I always hope I'm funny, but it is tragic nonetheless, but I'm really super happy that uh, there was no loss of life or or. It impacted in any kind of physical way. Um, that's all I have, I do have a request, if I could, Lisa, I inadvertently deleted my agenda on my computer, could you please send that to me again? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Karen. Mike?
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to give a shout out to uh, Melissa Steele and Linda and all of her staff for uh. They did a really amazing First Friday last uh, weekend, I mean, it was uh. I've never seen that many people in one place at one time. And uh, I thought they did an excellent job. We enjoyed ourselves during that, so congratulations to them. Yes, I agree.
Thank you, buddy. Jesse? Just wanna thank all of our staff for getting to a constituent's concern over the weekend, and you guys got to that very late, so I appreciate that. And I want to echo what you always have said, is thank you to Linda, Melissa Steele, as well as Public Works and everybody that's involved with First Friday. And that it's an amazing turnout, it keeps growing bigger and bigger, so something to be proud of, I think that's awesome, thank you, guys.
Mike? Thank you, Jesse. I too would like to wish your parents all my good. Uh, I live through the same thing. Uh. And just five years ago. My house turned, the first one turned down, it was a total loss, but uh, I I know that would be hard to do. So again, if you need anything, just let me know. And I wish the parents.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And then I too want to say, First Friday was, like you said, it was amazing. There were people everywhere this time. It was cool, and I think there's time to uh, it heats up, I think there'll be more and more people, so. Congratulations to everyone that is involved in this, so thank you. And then I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Fernando and Al, I think Al's actually at the drive watch. So we should all do a little here and surprise. But uh, Fernando had a procedure done yesterday, I spoke with him, he's feeling good, I just spoke to him on the interview today. So, want to wish them well, a speedy recovery. And then to uh, congratulate the class of twenty twenty three. Graduation is uh, my notes said it is this Thursday. And then the high school is on the twenty sixth of August. So congratulations to all those students, uh, one of the achievement. And then lastly, I'd like to congratulate the golf team, the Globe High School golf team and Coach Yip.
Oh, yeah.
They outstanding job. Like I had to walk, I meant with. Run the whole court or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is boring. We didn't get a play, we just watched, I'm like, really? Didn't know. But anyway, congratulations to the golf team.
Thank you, thank you.
And then the baseball team too, their last game was uh. You know, Sam can actually, it's a double header, they got people, but uh, they had a hang of a year, so congratulations to the Globe High School baseball team. And I believe that's it. Paul?
Um, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members Council, um, just a a quick pull up, uh, sewing pool update, community uh, pool. Um, it is is going very well, we're we're uh, right in the throes of the last little bits of 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 getting things together, they were um, we were out training on the systems. Uh, today, the 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 pumps and everything is running and the slides and uh, run and everything like that. Um, I don't want to jinx it by by making any announcements. So like, everybody's been cautioning me to be careful, but we are we are about ninety eight percent sure that we're gonna have a a an opening date that'll make everybody happy. And uh, I'll leave it at that, but I'll tell you, every every member of staff, everybody involved with that, um, the the crews that are are local um, uh, construction companies, uh, structural. Uh, our utilities, um, our partners are all um, doing everything we can to to hit that opening date and uh, you know, we don't know. Uh, like I said, we got a little bit of a gap to to get there in the way of things that we don't know for sure. Um, but if the glide path is right for a a good opening date, they'll make a a strong season. So leave it at that. The um, again, First Friday, uh, you know, spearheaded by uh, Linda and her team, but definitely with the help of, couldn't do without Public Works and many others. Uh, behind the scene, everybody kind of knows what First Friday is because we all have a little bit of a different ritual. And everybody's excited to see, you know, all the people in downtown and lock in your parking spots early. Whatever. I, yeah, I made the mistake of going someplace at about two o'clock the afternoon and there we went, a month away. So um, gotta be careful about that. And then um, and also, the, you know, city city staff is is working around and working with all the different construction projects we have going on. Um, you know, between the bridge and uh, uh, new lines and just everything going on here, we have a a lot of busy activities we're we're keeping track of and making sure things are done right, project right up front. You know, just to be as one of them. Um, so, but your your staff is is uh, hard at it, making sure everything uh, goes as planned and we we get what we paid for and that and that we get it in a timely fashion. So, uh, kudos to all staff. Mr. Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. There we go, our first community call of the public, and I have three senior cards. Uh, just a reminder to the speakers, we have three minutes. And we're not allowed to comment on the topics that we can have staff uh, get a hold of you and discuss those topics. So first on the list is Ken Cho.
Can you change?
Say that right, Jay, sorry. Can you move out to the podium?
Thank you for allowing.
And then if you can, we need to, we're filming on YouTube, so we need to make sure you have a microphone. And and tell us, member, can you make sure that it's on?
Okay. Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, Mr. State Britain, thank you. I can use my teacher's voice. I really don't even.
It's for the people on YouTube, that's why it's there. Come on, I'll be right here, I'll be right here. Don't touch whatever you touch, that's.
Yeah, open the, open the thing here, there.
Next, we submit these while there there's pictures and things like that, and um. That way you'll understand what I'm talking about, is that okay? Maybe does there.
Thank you.
Here you go. Okay. There you go. Thank you. In our neighborhood, we're having trouble with animals being on the loose. And since um, last year, I have documented that various animals that have been on the loose. And it's a neighbor that has five or more dogs that she has. And I had been telling Manny to please do something about Melanie's dog running loose on the streets. On April twenty fifth, my dogs had heart collars and one has electrical burns on his neck because he kept. Barking at those dogs who were harassing them in front of my gate. I had taken pictures of Melanie's dogs and sent them to Animal Control. However, since it was uh. Four two five number, I didn't work, I again called Animal Control and Tina Cummings. Kenna Ted gave me a cell number to send my pictures to. This has been an ongoing issue since October twenty six, twenty twenty two. My dogs all have licenses, vaccinated pigs, and has an electric fence around the premises. I noticed her dogs don't have collars on them. Last year, Melanie's dogs killed Charlie Valencia's uh, laying hens, which were worth a thousand dollars. Also, isn't there a city law um, that states if you own five or more dogs that you order has to have a kennel license? Also, isn't there a leash law in the city or county? This is some of the Arizona, Arizona, we buy statues and City of Phoenix ordinance says, and I highlighted the pertinent information. I know I only have three, that's why I'm trying to talk real fast, and I highlighted the rest of it so that you can see. Um. Any part of the the pamphlet, I also have my dogs in the yard with her dogs harassing my dogs. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Kim. We'll have a.
Good, so, Mr. Vice Mayor, yes, we will, and to council, um, I think we have had access to information and we'll follow up with the complaint.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
You'll be safe.
Uh, next, I have Karen Flores.
Due to my uh, analytical problems, we have a hard time.
And hang on one second, I think we can get you a hand mic. So, let's see. And and just as while we're waiting, let's try not, let's uh, be preferable that we not name any individuals since they're not here to defend themselves. Okay, there's two sides to every story, but if you can talk in generalities, what you did was fine, except minus the names.
Uh, my name is Karen Flores, I live up Lake Street, and this is regards to the death of my dog recently, with the dogs that are running loose. I'd like to know if there's an ordinance or what we can do to stop those dogs from running loose. They killed two of my dogs already.
And and like I say, as Vice Mayor stated, we can't respond, but but staff will probably uh, talk to you before you leave here, and we'll get the information and see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm sorry if your dog.
Yes.
Next, we have Bravery Shoemaker.
Hello, thank you for uh, the time, and I am having a really big issue with speeding on Hackney Hill. Uh, I'm a very new addition to Globe, I've been here since August, and uh, in that time, I have almost been in about. I would say three collisions where just by backing out, I've had cars. Uh, they don't even slow down, they just speed around me as I'm backing out and fly down the hill. If anyone here has ever been on Hackney Hill, it's very steep, I'm at the very steepest part of that. And just past my property, uh, Hackney Hill goes a blind left turn. And at that blind left turn, apparently that is the beginning of the drag strip because they just gun it as fast as they can down that hill. And I may be uh, exaggerating, but when it's a fifteen mile an hour and they're doing thirty plus. You know, it's it's, there's no possibility of a chance for them to stop in time, which is why they speed around me and go down. Uh, I have video surveillance, I've submitted to the police department as well as the Vice Mayor, uh, as well as uh, Mr. Shipley. And I don't expect that the police could possibly be out there enough to curb any of this issue, the only possible way that. You, I can feel safe having my son walk up and down uh, to his bus stop where they fly past him, they don't slow down, they don't stop when he's walking up and down the road. The only possibility of safety out there is either a stop sign or speed bumps or something along those lines. And I voiced my uh, concerns with the police department, they've been very quick to respond, I I definitely want to give my appreciation and thanks to them. I've used the app and I've submitted videos, multiple videos on the app, and you know, it's just, I feel I'm doing so much in this community to try and make it my own and and be happy here. And I'm just gonna go out and die one day checking my mail because, and it's not, it's not uh, random people, it's residents that live above the hill, it's the same four or five vehicles. And it's, there's no possibility of any any kind of reprieve from this other than traffic calming uh, on that hill, it's a very steep hill and. I just, I'm pleading for help, I'm sure that the police department is tired of me uh, submitting the same exact stuff every single day and calling about the same exact stuff every single day. And I just don't know what it's gonna take, like me dying or one of my family members dying or, you know, there's been near accidents from people. Flying down when people are already coming up, they're driving down, they're texting, they're eating sandwiches while texting, you know, it's something's gotta go. So, thank you for your time, I really appreciate yous.
Thank you. Thank you, Bravery.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, we're aware of this, we've had internal conversations, we're, I'm looking at options, uh, other than, and also, they are aware of the police department, but we're also looking at the, on the transportation side of it. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Bravery. Okay, next on the agenda, there's special presentations and serial serial volume matters. Next, I should have you come, I believe your sister's on her book. So I'm gonna go ahead and uh, read the, it's item A. So Mayor, I'm also presenting the Public Works Department, proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. So. National Public Works Week proclamation, May twenty first through May twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Connecting the world to public works, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services. Better than dynamo harness to sustainable and resilient communities. And to the public health, high quality of life and well being of the people of the city of Globe. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. Or engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government. And the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting emissions, transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public center for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the City of Globe to gain knowledge. Of and to maintain and ongoing interest in understanding the importance of public works. And public work programs in the respective communities. And whereas in year twenty twenty three, March the sixty third, Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be a proud result, I, Vice Mayor, state with me, if I designate the week, May twenty first through May twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, as National Public Works Week. Hired all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association. And government agent activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works. Professionals, engineers, managers and employees that do recognize substantial contributions they make to protecting. Safety and quality of life. Witness wherever I have here, should be back my calendar, cause the CL is a state where it's going down, have a drill here going this night day, May twenty twenty three.
You want to come down and get a picture with?
I thought you said Eddie Johnson.
You want to present that to John and then get a picture with counsel in the background? Vince, you can do the picture taking. Oh, you're sending Vince out. Okay, John, you can do the picture taking. So, meet the Vice Mayor in the middle.
Halfway here.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Vince, John, the guys you have working for you, they do a hell of a job out there, man. I've seen them in the water in the wintertime, working on water leaks. I've seen them in the creek cutting trees and weeds and everything. And they seem to get along pretty well. I think they do a good job. So, you guys should let them know that we think they're pretty tough guys out there.
They are. I've seen John ways deep over here on the corner.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That was a long read. How about that? All right. Booting right along. Okay, onto the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public items are designated by the master prior to consideration of the consent. And the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public carrying item for separate consideration. Members of the council and their staff, which may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, consideration of waiver section 2-10A, prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Item one, accounts payable, $1,018,186.74. Two, consideration of approval of Council minutes. Two A, April 25, 2023, meeting minutes. Item B, consideration to approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval of a request to approve a new exterior paint scheme and windows for the Hefner Building and the Jason Hall located at 233 and 253 South Broad Street. Item C, consideration to approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval of a request to approve a new exterior paint color signage for a high desert domain society building located at 395 North Broad Street. And item D, consideration to approve the historic preservation advisory commission's recommendation of approval of a request to approve new exterior paint color and signage for the DMO Harris Bank Building located at 101 South Broad Street.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, we have a request to pull item D from consent and consider that following the consent agenda.
Item.
D is the 101 South Broad Street item. Yes. And I don't see anybody else moving to pull any others.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. Items 4A through 4C. And then discuss 4D after you approve. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second. Call for the vote. All my favorites say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes. Now onto item D.
Item D, correct. If you want to reread that item.
Consideration to approve the historic preservation advisory commission recommendation of approval of a request to approve new exterior paint color and signage for the DMO Harris Bank Building located at 101 South Broad.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, there's a slight change on that and I think we have Dana available to explain that. And then after discussion of that, see if we want to continue for the vote to approve the recommendation. Dana, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Do you want to go ahead and explain to council the change?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Stapleton, and council members of performance items. For a quick discussion, ideally, the applicant had contacted staff on Monday stating that the bank had a request to make a slight change to one of the signs. If you look here on your, on your screens, you can see the, what was recommended for approval from HPAK is on the left side of the screen. It just says DMO and has the red logo. And on the right side of your screen, you see what's being proposed to replace the left side there, which includes that banking center text. They reduced the font size and everything to stay compliant in the sign area allowed for this, this stretch of the building. If you notice, this is a very long voided wall here along the street. It's about 110 foot long building. So, I think that replacement, that additional signage does also within our allowed sign area, as I mentioned, but also probably provides more scalable proportional signage on that elevation. Then they also added a banking center. It was like a sticker to one of the windows, which is regulated a little differently, but also part of this request. But it all complies with your codes. If for whatever reason you'd like to explore the HPAK's recommendation or want to look at alternatives, we can discuss that. But I feel very comfortable in this not all change and all within our code that it wouldn't probably make any, have a consequence to HPAK's recommendation. So, with that, I would recommend council to include this package as well as some new color on the front edge. You can see, I'd be happy to show you additional images from this packet, this request. But again, staff recommends approval. HPAK recommends approval of the entire package with exception to what you're seeing here on the screen.
So, and Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Dana, did you have any chance at all to inform HPAK of this last minute change or?
I did, Matt. I anticipate, depending on council's direction tonight, following the vote, HPAK will know what to resolve us and if that was the change.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any further questions? Any desire to say?
My question, I think, is, Vice Mayor, the property owner of, are they acceptable to the revision?
All right. Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, council member? Yes, this is the property request or application from their assigned consultant contractor.
Oh, okay. So, this is for their request?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood. Thank you.
Dana, that blue that's on the front of the building, that's the blue they picked out versus a blue that HPAK chose for them?
That's the blue they picked out as it's their corporate color.
Okay.
Wow.
That is very good.
And HPAK took a look at it. They acknowledged they liked that, the coloring, not the existing color, but felt the color, they didn't have much discussion of any actually of the proposed blue, except for we like the old bank of the West color. So, it looks like the bank of the West color was also somewhat matched to their corporate.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, all right.
And does that blue match the historical preservation's paint splash or whatever they call it?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Dana, I mean, we have to make leeway for corporate colors. I mean, a corporate logo is a corporate logo color. How does, how do we, our code handle that where?
That was discussed with HPAK in the past as well as in this request. I'll just let you answer council member's question first. The most closest color I presented in the staff report is a royal blue or something like that. It's a deeper darker blue. But so, like, no, it's not a specific color match. Again, it's a corporate color. HPAK acknowledges that the particularly signage, when that comes through, that there are corporate branding guidelines and things like that and haven't expressed the desire to try and change, request changes to those colors. And that's the same with this particular elevation color change that we see. So, they acknowledge it. No, there's no carve out. Just look at it for what it is. Look at it in context of the adjacent buildings and how it, you know, meets or is, is consistent with the other colors or complementary of other colors, you know, directly adjacent. That's the extent of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. They place the train in the west, leaving the deal. I wasn't even aware of this. I didn't know, so I was curious.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of myself. Yeah, I'm sure staff was aware, but I just personally wasn't aware. I think everybody's known.
We purchased two banks in town. There's another one that did not require HPAK or your approval that down off of the.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, usually sign packages are the full, first full public requirement to state changes like this. So, sign packages usually are the precursor to going public. You've given the, given the train a run for the money.
That's a huge difference.
As the sign vote.
That's a big difference for downtown area. It's very vibrant.
Well, we don't.
It's going to have to get used to, I guess.
And then do you have something to do with this?
Well, in the, in the, the agenda's about the sign package and everything. So, we can't go too far afield into them.
I just want to.
No, but the sign. Blue, that blue coloring on it, it's HPAK approved that blue as well.
Yeah.
I think the other two items involved, the paint schemes for the buildings are going to make a nice improvement. Frank, I'd like to see us have more of our businesses cleaning up their fronts.
Blink a lot with that one. Blink that message there.
Oh, yeah. Would you need to have this cleaned up? Okay, so, Mr. Vice Mayor, if there's no further discussion on 4D, I would make a recommendation that we approve of the request for the new exterior paint color and signage of the DMO Harris Bank Building located at 101 South Broad Street.
Motion in the third.
Second.
A motion in the second. Call for the vote. All my favorites say aye.
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 Any opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, on to new business. 5A.
You want, you need to read it and then we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so, this is 5A was consideration to approve an award to the city of Globe from National Children's Alliance Grant, number GF-24-57-0500 to $1,000 to utilize by Globe Police Department. Corporate bills, family, that is just.
And so, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this was actually part of a larger agenda item that was approved last, two weeks ago. And so, it inadvertently came back on the agenda and no need to reapprove it. And so, request that you motion to table and that will be the end of that. It's already, it's already been approved two weeks ago. Yeah, so, so this particular agenda item, just a motion and second to table. What's that?
Table and second.
Yes.
My motion to table and second would be 5A.
A motion in the second. Call for the vote. All my favorites say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes. Thank you. Item B, consideration of possible approval of an application by the city of Globe to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, a grant for border security, fun, fun anti-human traffic, grant ID number GF-24-57-05003 in the amount of $333,320 to be utilized by the city of Globe.
Hello, Vice Mayor, council. Say, men and gentlemen, so the background on this is that Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, which is the act of the amazing Dana, is offering various grants to the state of Arizona. Specifics on usage on the grant are anything relative to the investigation and prevention of human sex trafficking. If awarded the grant of $333,320, it's, the money would be utilized in various areas such as training. It would be partially allocated to pay for our current forensic interviewer, Shelley. It would be also used part and partial in for our new contracted victim map, which you voted on in the last council meeting. Also for more license plate reader cameras, LPR cameras throughout the city to help identify vehicles involved in trafficking, various equipment and other things. So, it would be solely, oh, and also I think included it for 33.3% of the detective salary to investigate these crimes. So, the money wouldn't necessarily solely go to the advocacy center, but a good majority would. Part of it would go back to the general budget for the police department as the detective salary and some of the LPR stuff. So, our recommended motion is that the council approves our application for the Arizona DMO grant, which would be, as you read, Mr. Vice Mayor, grant ID number GF-24-57-05003 for the amount of $33,320. And I also like to add to this, this is a no map grant and it's a reimbursable grant. So, how that would be made for if awarded, we'll talk about it later more. If we're awarded, we would just submit money that we need and just pay it back as we go. As I said, it's no matter. Can you repeat that vote? $33,320.
And.
What did I say?
33.
Oh, I'm sorry, 330. I'm making this a lot. I think the full speaker. 333,300 or 3320.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Off the top of your head, how many license plate cameras do you think like to acquire?
I don't know. Part of this grant, we were told, is not an all or none deal. So, I think we asked for six more stationary cameras and then mobile unit, which would go on our patrol car. So, as they're going, driving around, they're constantly reading these plates. How that benefits us is, say, Mesa PD has a vehicle that's involved in these trafficking stuff and they may get injury on the LPR system. Our vehicle pick it up and we can stop that vehicle. So, even if it's not Globe, like just. So even if it's not blow, like just travel through, or if we have something that happened here, Mesa PD can pick it up just off of their LPR. We may stop. But I think we put in for six plus a mobile. But like I said, they may just say, well, we're just gonna give you one or none. But then we would get a portion of the other grant.
Mr. Vice Mayor. So Steve, I believe it was last week I was reading an article in the paper or something. And it was saying that Highway 60 is becoming more of a raceway for smuggling and trafficking and everything. Have you guys seen an uptick on that kind of issue?
I think we've been catching. This thing's very. I think we've seen an increase. I don't know if it's due to our increase in officers being on the road and the amount of traffic we're doing now. We're just increasing smuggling, but the fact is there's any rural route where they can avoid interstate highways and detection on interstate highways and use to, to avoid detection. Like I said, 390 and I board these stuff like that. They like to route through the mountains where there's a lot less cops and stuff like that.
So you are seeing a little bit of an uptick on that?
I think we have seen an uptick. But as I said, I don't know if it's because it's increased or just because we're so, we're adequately staffed now to where we can actually enforce the laws. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Mr. Williams, you talked about the advocacy center. Would this fulfill the needs of that center? Because I know that last time we talked about this, fiscally, the center needed some, some funds to keep personnel there. Would this suffice or are we looking for additional funds?
Well, this will definitely help. As I said, as the council voted on two weeks ago, this will help pay for the victim advocate, the director of the advocacy center, Shelley, who's also the forensic interview, interviewer. It'll, it'll directly pay for, I think, also 33% of her salary. So it'll have a huge impact on that we have, this center, we can continue to grow as we have.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Reos, the, the victim advocate that we approved two weeks ago is totally funded through grant money. The, the Shelley's position is a city staff position that we, we put out there with hopes of receiving some backfill through these types of grants. So there, there's a difference there that Shelley's position is not dependent upon grant funding, but enhanced by grant funding. It helps take the, the, you know, helps to supplement that. But if, if we got no grant funding for Shelley's position, it, it would not endanger that position at all. She's a permanent merit employee with the city. Now, the contractor, that one is solely based on grant funding.
It's maybe 40%. Successful ones. Forty percent.
Twenty percent.
Thank you.
Any other opposed?
Mr. Vice Mayor, there's no further discussion. Let's see, we're on 5B.
Yes.
5B. I would make a motion to approve an application by the City of Glow to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs as DEMA grant for border security, anti-human trafficking, grant ID number GF dash 24 dash 57 dash 05003 in the amount of $330,000, $320 bucks to be utilized by the City of Glow Police Department.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Any abstaining?
That's a very good. No, we're supposed to bring that forward or that?
No, this, this is the, this is not the last time. Yeah, so you, you approved the application and it didn't have to weigh the rule because if we win it, we'll have to accept the money. And so it was perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't see. Consider possible adoption of resolution number 1873, demonstrating City of Glow, City Council's approval of the submission of the Arizona 2024 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Plan, number GF dash 24 dash 57 dash 05004. Shelley, would you like to read the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Resolution number 1873, a resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Glow, Gila County, Arizona, pertaining to the submission of projects for consideration in Arizona's 2024 Highway Safety Plan and appointing the city's chief of police as the city's agent to represent the city's interest in processing of related grants. Is council pleased with that agreement?
Yes. Thank you, Shelley. So Vice Mayor, Members of Council, basically the background on this is the police department has once again submitted a, a grant to the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety. For the grant we spoke of, we're needing a resolution prior to receiving it. Mostly the funds that we asked for on this grant or will be asking for would be used for overtime for officers to work traffic details and for traffic enforcement such as possibly unhacking. Also for a speed display sign as cars pass and they can see the actual speed that they're going. It's also very handy if you want to try and get message or a trailer so we can put out messages for our special events that we have downtown. We have detours or some other emergency stuff like that. But GOHS does require a reservation for the grant before, before that grant is considered. Again, this is a no match grant that we're asking.
Vice Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to approve resolution of 1873 for the submission of the Arizona 2024 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Plan.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You have some luck with that one as well.
Yes, sir. Item B, consideration of possible approval of the library service agreement for fiscal year 2023, 2024, with Gila County Library District in the amount of $126,800 plus $12,000 for telephone expenses, for a total of $128,000 in library services.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stapleton and Council. This year, we are asking for approval of the library service agreement and it will be coming back because the legal council wants to make some tweaks to the agreement. So we'll definitely be seeing it next time. We received, or we're being offered $4,900 more dollars this year than we were, we, we received last year, which is a great help to our community and to our budget bottom line. Something that is part of the library service agreement that I think needs to be brought to the council's attention is the Library Bill of Rights from the American Library Association. It's written into the agreement that we will follow this. And so I thought it'd be nice for you guys to know what that is. So it says, "The American Library Association affirms that all libraries are forums for information and ideas and that the following basic policies should guide their services. One, books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves. Materials should not be excluded because of the origin, background, or views of those contributing their creation. Two, libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because partisan or factual disapproval. Three, libraries should challenge censorship in the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. Four, libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups concerned with resisting abridgement of free expression and free access to ideas. Five, a person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. And six, libraries which make exhibit spaces and meeting rooms available to the public they serve should make such, such facilities available on an equitable basis, regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting their use." This was adopted June 19th, 1939 and has been renewed multiple times by the American Library Association. And I think it's kind of interesting that we're in such a political turmoil over censorship and banning.
Vice Mayor, there's no questions?
I do have a question. Why did we bring this back, both groups?
There's a legal changes that.
Tweak.
That the.
And, and we, we didn't want to weigh the rule and need to say that we don't need to.
Now, will this bill of rights or, yeah, bill of rights be posted publicly?
It is posted in the library, correct me.
Also, I need to make a move. Mr. Vice Mayor, let's see. Make a motion to return the library request of $128,000 to the next available meeting, meeting for possible final approval.
I have a motion and a second. Call, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes.
It does go here safely. You look after that bus.
They're twisted safely, but that's still on the road next time. My phone's a little.
I can move it over here. No, no, but I know, but it might slow you down.
Item B, consideration to approve bed tax distribution request that the Gila County Historical Museum requests for the third quarter of fiscal year 2022, 2023 in the amount of $8,960.58. And for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2022, 2023 in the amount of $9,591.32 funded from account number 10 dash 51 dash 51925, General Fund Community Organization, Gila County Historical Museum.
Paul?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, one of the, when we set up the system with the, the distribution of the exact amount of the bed tax and then waiting for that bed tax come in and then having organizations apply for it, we, we set up a conundrum at the end of the year for the fourth quarter because we don't know until July, if not early August of, of the, the year, which is two months after the close of the budget cycle, what that amount is. And so it, and this has gotten us in trouble with the auditors because we're, we're paying out in July, August, sometimes September, sometimes further on, money from the, the prior budget year. So what we did in this to eliminate that conundrum is we, we took an average of the three distributions and distributed the fourth quarter based on the average of the three. So we have a hard number to give out and then we can, we can true that up in the future. I think we're, we're looking at, and we've internally with our new finance staff, we've had some discussions about a better way to do this. So we're not shooting ourselves in the auditor foot and we'll bring that forward through our process. But for, for tonight, we wanted to clear the decks and, and get most of these lined up and, and distributed. It's good for the, for the groups and it's good for us and the money comes out during this budget cycle. And so that's why I have three of them here.
Mike?
Well, the last time around, we distributed the bed tax for the Pullman Valley Center for the Arts. They brought us all four quarters and they said it's because of COVID. You know, they're bringing us all four quarters again.
But no, I think. Have we gotten to that one yet?
Well, no, well, it's one.
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so let's, we're gonna, you gotta.
Okay.
Yeah, one at a time.
Well, it gets the right to know.
No, that's, that's okay. Okay, but this, this one, I believe we have had a presentation. So we have, and, and, and just so everybody understands what we're talking about, the, it has been our, our desire that, that each presenter, each time we distribute, that we get a, a quick presentation from those presenters. And, and they're happy to do it. It's a little bit of a scheduling consideration. And since we, we wanted to get this cleaned up before the end of the budget cycle, we as staff are, are asking that. Well, the other thing we're doing is, is not asking to weigh the rule, have this come back. And if you would like any of these, you would like to see them come and do a presentation, we can ask them. So when this comes back on the meeting, the 23rd, that if they want to have them come back for that, we can, we can do that for any of these. But I do believe we have had a presentation and the, the one that we're, the, the item that we're on right now, E, which is Historical Museum, I think we have seen presentations from the past and are comfortable with, with them. So on this specific item, item E, it's council's pleasure, and we would just recommend move it to the next meeting and then we'll finalize all three of them or finalize them in two weeks.
We're on 5B, right?
5B.
5B, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I make a motion to approve item 5E, forward to the next council meeting for final consideration.
Second. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes. Item H, consideration to approve bed tax distribution request for the Globe Miami Regional Chamber of Commerce for the third quarter of fiscal year 2022, 2023 in the amount of $13,440.88 in the fourth quarter of fiscal year 22, 23, in the amount of $14,386.99 in the company account number 10 dash 51 dash 51900, General Fund Community Organization, Globe Miami Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, again, we're trying to wrap up the distribution of the bed tax for our bed tax organization. This one would go to the Globe Miami Regional Chamber of Commerce. That fourth amount, the fourth quarter amount is a, a average of the, the previous three. And we would not ask that you weigh the rule, but bring this forward to the next meeting. But I do believe that we've heard presentations from the chamber and I, I think that we have enough information to, to go forward with, with approving this in two weeks. It's council's pleasure.
I'm done. You want this, you want this move as well?
Yeah, move forward. We'd like to move all three forward.
Do you want to move these forward?
We, yeah.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
We issued an agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll make the motion. If there are any comments or questions, I motion to move this item forward to the next council meeting for final consideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Motion passes.
Sorry, Shelley, I missed it.
Item I, consideration to approve bed tax. Item I, consideration to approve bed tax distribution request from the Pool Valley Center for the Arts for the third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. In the fourth quarter in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents, funded through account number ten dash five one dash five one nine two zero, General Fund for the Pool Valley Center for the Arts.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the same, we're trying, I think we've heard from the Center for the Arts, if you're comfortable with their progress and the, what, how they're using the money, we would recommend that you move this forward to the next meeting and we will get this tied up. But we are trying to limit the number of waive the rules we're doing and so that's one of the reasons we're moving these forward. It also gives time for anybody to, you know, if there's concerns, but the same story, we're trying to true this up before the budget cycle ends.
I appreciate that.
I, sometimes I, I know the council, yes, yeah, we, we don't have to, you know, nothing, nothing to learn by the second kick of the mule.
Vice Mayor, I would make a motion to move this item forward to the next council meeting for final approval. Final consideration.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes. Item J, consideration to approve bed tax distribution request from the downtown association for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-eight cents. In the second quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Third quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. In the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents, funded from account number ten dash five one, five one nine one five.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this, the Downtown Association is a little different. They have not come to us this year with a request. We have not heard from, I believe, check me if I'm wrong, that we've not heard from any of the members of the Downtown Association on how they've been spending money and activities and things like that. We would like to move this forward to the next meeting, but I believe that Councilman Pastore might have a request.
Well, you know, the last year we got into the same argument, discussion about the Downtown Association. They submitted for the bed tax at the end of the year. And everybody else is required to submit every quarter. And their excuse, from one time that I can remember well, it was COVID. You know, and the other time, I don't remember. They've had several different excuses over the years. And, you know, to me, why should we wait around for them if they don't need the damn money? Let's keep it.
I...
Mr. Vice Mayor? I attended a meeting just the other night with Globe, you know, the Association. I believe we approved two quarters worth. Shelley, did you have any receipt of that?
Yes, we received it right before, well, last week when we requested it.
They did forward it to you? Okay, and where goes to?
That's it, looped into this.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
So they may be the first two quarters?
No, it's, they followed up with the missing information due.
I believe they, they had met for the first quarter of twenty-two, twenty-three. However, they never submitted their request for that dispersment. So I did contact the Downtown Association and request that for this agenda and I believe they held the meeting for the third, the second and the third quarter and forwarded that to me and then the fourth quarter has been averaged.
So they, so they, Mr. Mayor, members, Vice Mayor, members of council, they, the board approved the first, but they never submitted to us. We asked them about following up and then they went and took the board, the second and third, and then we're folding in the fourth.
That's an idea that I know.
Does that make sense?
Have we continued those talks with our bed tax organizations? I mean, if this is continuing, maybe they don't want to be a bed tax organization anymore. Maybe they can fund themselves now. I don't know what, I don't know what their story is. Again, I'm not on that board.
Yeah.
That's his board, but if we can continue those talks and they bring them to the table and figure it out, if not, maybe then that money can go to more D C or for another, it can be split amongst the bed tax organization. I don't know how, how it's gonna work out.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilman Lethem, a couple things you can bring up. Number one, this is approved by, these, these bed tax distributions were, are put in place by council with the support many, many years ago, but they are fully a council, not, it was not put in place by the voters, but in place by council and it is council's responsibility for, to do due diligence and to do share responsibility, make sure it's being spent properly and, and for the right mechanisms. Each year we come to council and we'll be coming to council to ask for distribution methodology and amounts and things like that. We can have that, as I think I said before, we're working on for some changes just so we stay out of the mechanics of the audit problem, but we can have that discussion on the broader discussion about, of the topic of bed tax. And our plan had been to have that discussion as we do every year for the budget. That's number one. Number two, I would recommend that we invite members of the Downtown Association to come before council in two weeks and ask them the question as to the questions that you may have on how this year went.
Mr. Vice Mayor? I can't say, Jesse, that in the last two submissions that were presented, revenue was up. I can't swear that it's an ongoing increase in revenue, but the activity of the tours through the year is up substantially. It's a positive trend and I think it's time that we make that kind of dialogue with all concerned because if revenues are up, can we license some of it? And I don't mean to attack any of them. I'm saying our success in economic development has caused an uptick overall in the tourist dollar, the tourist travel. We're seeing that and this is that evidence. It's one of many upticks that we're seeing across the board already. Maybe it is time to approach them and I think that's, it's a valuable discussion. It's part of what we want to happen is an increase in revenue. And if someday we all become self-sufficient in each of our areas, that's the time we should be ready for it to redistribute and consider redistribution, redistribution discussion to all consider. That's, that's a good point, Jesse.
Very.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, I've been on this council, on this side for a number of years now where we have discussed bed tax and bed tax groups probably every single year on some of the fallacies that we experienced. And I applaud that, you know, our staff, our city manager has made steps to try and close some, close some of the gaps and the loops that we have found and that we've experienced. I appreciate that we're trying to make a concerted effort because we've talked about it, on getting these, these bed tax groups to, you know, to commit to, to the general rule of, of, applying and submitting documentation because these are tax dollars. And my fear was in the past, it almost felt like it was an entitlement. And because of that, because of that sense of entitlement, then it just became a wedge between the city and the bed, the bed tax groups. And I think we need to break that wedge down and really come, come to a, you know, a real concerted effort to explain the city's position. You know, we don't want to get deemed on audits because of lack of participation on the other end. That's, that's just not good business. It's not, and it's definitely not good business for the city. You know, whatever, whatever means that these groups need to comply with, I think we need to really hold in on that and make it, make it relevant that this isn't just about tax dollars being shared with these certain groups. This, this bed tax rule or law or distribution, if I'm not mistaken, was created in the eighties, if not sooner.
Eighty-nine, I think.
About eighty-nine? And, you know, eighty-nine was a long, a lot of years ago and things changed. And, you know, we're in a different world now where, you know, we're accountable. This council, this mayor council is accountable. And so I think it's really important that we have that discussion and we invite them, absolutely invite them, so that there is no, so that we're just totally transparent. Okay? Just totally transparent. So, anyway, I went off a little bit, but only because I deal with this every single year.
Every year.
Every year, it helps out.
Every year.
And we're starting to get where, okay, it's gonna be a one-time thing, one, it's not gonna be one quarter here, one quarter there, fourth quarter, third quarter, first quarter. It's just too much work to try and balance their tax dollars and their revenues.
Especially when they don't want to, they're not asking.
Right. Anyway, that's, that's just my statement for today. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I hear two things. I hear a desire to have that discussion and that would be a standalone discussion encompassing all the bed tax and pretty much all options there, but on this one, and so that was our intent to bring them, to bring this issue forward, but what I'm also hearing is invite everyone involved so we make sure we have everybody in the room and let them, inform them that we will be talking about this. To this item specifically, I believe that it would be a motion to bring this to the next meeting contingent upon getting a representative from the Downtown Association. Would be the stipulation on the motion.
I would agree with that. You know, all the others have responded.
They've all had their turn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, yeah, the other, the other three are in good standing and are doing a double, a double collection because of our need to get the auditing.
The council requires it.
Yes, that is, that is a council requirement. Seems like a long time. Yeah, no, every year. And, and so my, my question, are you comfortable if, when we bring forward the Historical, the Chamber and Center for the Arts, if we cannot, we are bringing those forward, we are not requiring that they appear in two weeks, but we will invite them if they want to appear for the conversation. The only one, if you stipulate, as I had mentioned, we would have the approval Downtown Association dependent upon a spokesperson. Okay, so then if you follow with that motion, then we'll be good.
Make the motion with the stipulation that they attend the next week.
Okay.
Move this to the next available. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll move on to action items. Six A, discussion, discussion, what application, the possible adoption of the twenty twenty-three agenda to the City of Globe City Council's strategic action plan.
And, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, we wanted to go through the presentation and share this information and get feedback from the attending members of council. I know that both Councilman Shipley and Mayor Gamaros have been looking at that, they're not able to attend, so there would be no harm in going through the presentation, hearing the input from everyone attending, but then not doing final approval until two weeks so that the mayor and Councilman Shipley can, you know, share their thoughts. So I, my recommendation is we proceed with the presentation and get your feedback, but not do a final approval, but move it forward in two weeks. Yeah.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to present this too. So you last gathered to discuss the update of your strategic action plan in February at the adult center. And the overwhelming message from council this year was, let's keep the momentum going. So we have initialized so many long-term projects, one of those being the pool, infrastructure, of course, the bridges, and to bring those to conclusion before we launch any large-scale CIP projects was the overwhelming message again. So just kind of going over our three-year action plan in regards to the four identified pillars, first being community and economic development. So council priorities that have been reconfirmed are, of course, the downtown redevelopment plan and that would encompass downtown parking, improvement of sidewalks, improved lighting, improved aesthetics, and really investing in the gem of what is our downtown. Next, of course, is housing and supporting those efforts to increase our housing stock and fill opportunities. Last year, we concluded the housing study. Next phase is to initialize the housing plan and so that will be proposed in this year's budget as we move forward with that next phase in the housing action plan. Next is the Business Incubator. As we all know, that we've received congressionally directed spend funding from, that was directed to us from Sinema and O'Halloran and Senator Kelly, and we will receive seven hundred and fifty thousand to complete the build-out of that project so that we may roll out the programming that will be our Business Incubator co-work space. The Rook Project is being started by Hila County. In fact, our building, the Schultzen, I've already just attended a construction kickoff meeting for that and so that should begin in June of this year. I'm thinking, I guess about six to eight weeks before the beginning of monsoons.
Right.
Yes, definitely. And then, of course, tourism marketing. As, as you know, we have really jumped full speed ahead in promoting our city. We just finished up a rebrand of the City of Globe and we are seeing a greater return. We're seeing increased bed tax, we're seeing increased sales tax for the city, we're seeing more activity in our downtown, of course, through our First Fridays and just in our general tours and our traffic that we have going through town. And wayfinding, and this comes back to Vice Mayor, this is one of your priorities and this is the plaques and displaying the history of our downtown, the activities that have gone on inside of the buildings and noteworthy events. So this, this actually is moving forward. Right now, we're working with the Hila County Historical Museum and identifying those past occupants of our downtown buildings. And I have to apologize, our presentation held a faulty with the format and so I'm gonna have to toggle back and forth between some screenshots I took on my phone because we've had some really exciting updates regarding congressionally directed spending. So as, as you know, when we visited DC, we asked for support on many of our initiatives, those being the Safe Streets Plan, and that has moved forward with support from Senator Kelly and Sinema and also Diego. That is just coming in this past week. Let's see, infrastructure, of course. Without improved infrastructure, we're not going to see improved and greater economic development opportunities. And so we continue to focus on the Northeast Quarter sewer expansion and also the Northeast Quarter water line replacement. And this is, let's see, this has been supported by Representative Sten, Congressman Sten, and so this will be moving forward as well. Diego also is, is moving forward with the support of our water line replacement project. That's two point two million to fund phase one of the three, three-phase planned project to upgrade the water line infrastructure, which begins... to upgrade the waterline infrastructure, which begins with the hydraulic study. And then, of course, our downtown parking redesign. And we'd like to say structure, but that is a long-term project, and so looking at our downtown opportunities and how can we address those immediately in utilizing the, the property that we currently have and, and other opportunities. We, we own the Silver King Building right now, how can we better utilize the space? Right now, we're utilizing it for First Fridays to become an additional attraction. In fact, we have a waiting list now for, for vendors that are wanting to become part of First Friday, so that was a really smart acquisition on behalf of the city. Of course, quality of life and recreational development. As we all know, we've seen tremendous strides in improving our recreational opportunities within the City of Globe. We, we all can't wait for, for the big splash event, the opening of the Community Center Pool. We've seen over six million dollars in investment from the City of Globe and community stakeholders just in the past two years alone. And so we are going to be seeing increased investment in our, our recreational opportunities with these same stakeholders in the, in the very near future. We're about to launch in partnership with the Tonneau National Forest Service, a area, a total area recreational master plan, so everyone shall be invited to that kickoff. We're looking at July of this year. And then, of course, with all of these amazing opportunities, we need to provide better transit opportunities to get our residents, get our community members to these amenities, of course, of course, the Community Center Pool. Public safety. Our new fire station, we are continuing to move forward with the USDA full loan application. We didn't receive confirmation from Senator Kelly that he is moving forward in support of three point five million towards the, the new build of the fire department. This will help us to, to move forward with Phase One, which is full architectural design, mitigation of the site and site prep. And with, with the new fire station, we need a new ladder truck. Our current, our current truck, and Gary, I'm going to call you up so that you could speak to this, the aerial ladder truck. As I understand that, I'm going to have to speak to this, and I think you can speak much better than I.
Knows a little bit about it, yeah.
Just a little bit, and now we have good news for our, for Gary to assist us.
Yeah, so, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members, we've had numerous discussions related to this, but that ladder truck is now, the existing ladder truck is now thirty years old. As with anything, we, we find challenges now with acquiring parts for new vehicles when we have issues, let alone a thirty-year vehicle. And it's, although it's been well-maintained and stuff like that, it is, you know, if we do experience a failure of anything on that, chances are it's, it is a, a long-term thing unless it's, unless it's straightforward, depending on the, depending on the portion of the truck that's affected. So, we, we do have some work that's currently being done to it. We have some evaluations that's being done to it. It has its upcoming annual inspection that has to go through every year to date. You know, every year it's passed those inspections. But again, we, we do face the challenge that if it's one failure away from a, a long-term repair issue that could be very costly if we can find a solution.
And the current truck, right now, can only service a three-story high building, is that correct?
Yeah, it's designed, you know, it's a seventy-five-foot aerial, aerial ladder. So you figure based on distances, it's designed for a three, potentially a, a four-story, depending on what you can access, building, with limited functionality. One of the big challenges we have, you know, especially now, is, is making sure, number one, that the, the aerial, the aerial stream equipment on that, so we can flow water up that ladder. It requires a lot of maintenance to keep that functioning, to keep it not leaking, to keep the pump operational where it will, it will provide the service that is needed when, when... There's some, some concern we have that we're following up with on, on tanks, on the, the water tank, because it's a thirty-year-old tank, because of, associated with that. It has to be evaluated as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And so we did just receive word that Senator Sinema is supporting our efforts to paint in aerial ladder trucks to two point two million, and will also be supported by Senator Kelly and Diego. So that, that was incredible news, because that was something we didn't actually anticipate. We didn't get the warm and buzzies from our, our representatives as we were presenting these in person. And so to receive this in an email was extremely good news. And so as, as...
That's not warm and buzzing. That was from your rep.
That was from all the hustling.
Yeah.
So, and as Chief mentioned, the, the current truck can only service a three-story high building and in development, we are anticipating new, new builds, new higher-density builds that will be greater than three stories tall. And as we move forward in wanting to protect and maintain and preserve our, our downtown gem, it's, it's really imperative that we do have the, the proper equipment to protect our current inventory of buildings and our future inventory, as well as we are called upon by our area stakeholders, the minds, our neighboring communities to help maintain their safety as well. And then, of course, Chief Walters continues to move forward, working with the Community College, with E A C, in the development of a training facility, and this is anticipated to, to... Pardon? To be at the, the future Globe Unified School District Master Campus. Police Department and the Fire Department continue to offer community involvement opportunities and to really do an incredible job with their public relations outreach. And we've received great feedback regarding this, this important stride. And of course, as Mari, our, excuse me, Councilwoman Wallace has, has made, one of our city, has encouraged to make one of our city priorities is a citywide emergency plan. That continues to be moving forward. And of course, financial sustainability. It's, it's imperative that we maintain a strong organization so that we're moving forward with these, these long-term capital projects and initiatives. As first item, just had a long discussion, review of the bed tax and, and all of that is involved there. Long-term organizational plant staffing. Of course, we all need to be succession planning and increasing our capacity within our, our departments. We all wear so many hats, we need to be able to do, do more and move faster with what we have and plan for serving our community and our customers even better in the future. Optimization of our revenue sources. If you haven't met our new finance director, this is something he speaks upon very well, and I can't remember George's last name.
Uh, Unruh.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a tricky question. I had to clear some brain cells with that one.
You wouldn't.
Yeah.
And then as, as we move forward, we are, we'll be bringing back to council, actually, this will be coming to the Quality of Life Council Workgroup, the discussion of development fees. We, we need to really be looking at cost recovery. What, what does it cost the city to, to move forward with these projects? So that we, we can offer better, faster, more services to the coming development. And of course, water waste, water fee and capacity state, that will, will be coming, coming soon. Discuss that with, with our, our partnership with this afternoon, and this is a very important initiative that will be coming again to, to the council work group. Again, council, thank you for your commitment to the City of Globe and our residents, to our, our city and our services that we offer our residents and our, our new incoming residents. Do you have any comments or questions? I'm happy to take those.
Glad to know.
I'm very tired. I, I read your, Shelley passed on the, the document to us, and I had two days to review it. When, when you read what has been put in motion, what has been accomplished, and what remains, that's just the beginning of what we're seeing. And as we spoke earlier, there's road, there's infrastructure, there's bridges. All these things are super motioned, and there's more to come, because of federal dollars. Staffing has been added, adequate resources to, to all of our departments. And we're asking a lot of them. Really seeing that document reminded me how, how far we've come in, during my tenure, the last two and a half years. And there's more to come. I guess the thing I'm alluding to is, as soon as we get this document approved by us once again, we need to put it out there so the public can access it, wanted to see what we said we were gonna do and to show what we have done and what we're looking to in the future. I get asked a lot of the, from my constituency, about the nuances of what we're doing and how it applies to their neighborhood. And I spent a lot of time trying to get to the background, explaining to them how we got there. This document does that. And the most important thing I saw, walking away from that document, is all the redlining you all did to show we're done with that, we're moving to the next phase, or next year we'll be doing this. And that's why I'm saying I'm tired. We have run a full, full course. The staff has been running full course, and we're just starting and, and looking for ways to fund some of the future projects, the sidewalk from here to the college, for example, just one example. But all the redlining, I was impressed, and, and I was like a little kid that says, did I do that? Did we do that? Yeah. It's, it's been a long journey, but it's showing results, and I really want that project or that plan out there for the public to see. Not to garner any credit, but to see this is the steps we need to get to to improve our quality of life, and there's more to come. And I'm really pleased with our departments and the presentations that we put together to hand off to the federal delegation. I think that was the most important thing in, in the first meeting, as well as the most important thing in the meeting. And they have a handle now on what our needs are, and they're, they're putting it in the hopper. It's the best thing I can say. Fernando, he's not here, but he would say, I'll believe him when I see it. I get that. But it's in the federal hopper. We at least got that recognition, it's a minds are a delegation. So you asked me if that was a successful trip? Yeah, it was. And now we're waiting for it to trickle through and get back to us. I'm really proud to say, as soon as we can, get that document out there. I'd be glad to see that one out there, Chief, and there's more to come. Thank you.
Very good, President.
Joseph?
And I want to commend you. Five years ago, we were sitting at the fairgrounds, and we were discussing this, making it a living, breathing that we didn't know to this day what would travel in there. But five years, fast forward, of what staff has accomplished, and you keeping us alive and keeping us engaged and making sure the priorities are there, you should commend it for that. Most definitely. And it, it's, it's all of staff, it's, it's, it's all of our staff moving forward. And their marching orders, so to speak, of these are, this is where to go, and this is where to spend your money and resources. Staff now has a clear outline of what in staff, and how to help the public, and how to help council, and what are council's directives, where to go. And I think that it's, it's amazing, so you should commend it for that.
I guess the last thing I want to say, concurrent to that, our agencies, boards and commissions, our volunteer agencies, have all stepped up and run with their projects and secured funding. We have the, the stairway program of the bureaus that are now statewide and nationally well-known, and that's driving the tourist dollar yield as well. I have personal experiences with that. But they all stepped up as well, said, oh, here's the time to be progressive, here's the time for funding, here's the time to do the quality of life even better. And the first time it was such a fun trip, going from mural to mural. And I know it's, it's, our, our A B Cs, agency boards, commissions are stepping up to, to play on. I'm really pleased about that aspect. It's not just our employees, it's the public and these volunteer agencies that are stepping up. Right of all business, I think it's a positive work ethic.
Thank you, appreciate it. It's absolutely a team effort, so thank you.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, would be a, a motion to, to bring this forward for final approval in two weeks. And the next avail...
I'm looking. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any of the opposing say aye? Any of your standing? Thank you, members. And B, discussion and consideration to approve change order number two for C S dash two zero two three dash zero zero one five with H T four for the Dickinson Waterline Project, two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. These are probably currently capital with five zero dash eight zero, there are five two two... Water capital outlet construction.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. Here's a little quick change order for a waterline project out there in Jacobson Drive, on the Sitcher Canyon. Came due last two weeks ago, but another change order upsizing the pipe. Well, this is a part of future development, so we added a, a four-inch waterline valve and a stubout for future development up on the other end of the project. We, uh, all completed and ready for future. Change of comments? Good job.
No, really, I'd say, you know, the future's what's in front of us. Check out, right? And I can, I can appreciate your consideration for, for looking towards the future and expansion and, and being able to serve, so. And it's a nominal fee.
Yes.
Right?
Urgent, urgent.
For projects, that's like a couple of dollars, you know, so. Mr. Vice Mayor, are we on action items?
Yes.
No, I haven't yet. Like, there's a lot of comments or questions on motion to approve change order number two for C S twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one five with H T four for the Dickinson Waterline Project in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-nine says to be funded from the account of fifty dash eighty dash fifty-two two zero zero water capital outlet construction. Second.
Second. Call for the vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
And the opposing say aye? Any of your standing? Motion passed. Thank you. Stay right there. And C, discussion and consideration to approve change order number one for C S dash two zero two three dash zero zero six three with a patch underground excavator tips, emergency sewer line repair project in the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred and forty... Two zero, there are five two two zero zero, wastewater capital outlet construction.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council again. Another change order, this one said was part of the emergency repair on the sewer on the tips. We had to run some extra line and feet, or a four-inch line for service lines. We saw that, actually came into a common line situation in that area, so we had to separate them. And then we also had some property line issues, so we had to, like, take a different route, which made the run a little bit longer, so the cost was for the pipe and excavation they did to install it. Above and now it's all completed, everything's running perfect, everyone's happy, everyone's all cleaned up and, you know, next sewer out there.
And we're pleased, John?
Yeah.
Good.
And, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, since we're, we're fixing a common line problem as opposed to relocating a line, we felt it was important to, to get those, those four homes hooked back up. And normally, that would be on the homeowner, but in this case, because so much essential, sense of work went on... And normally that would be on the homeowner, but in this case, because so much essential sense of work went on, I thought it was wise for us to, the integrity of our system, to do the work ourselves.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I would make a motion to approve change order number one for C S dash twenty twenty three zero zero sixty three with Apache Underground Excavated Tibbs, Tibbs Emergency Sewer Line Repair Project and the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred forty eight dollars will be funded from the account number fifty one dash eighty dash five two two zero zero wastewater capital outlet construction.
Second.
There are a motion in the second. Call for the vote, all the papers say aye. Opposing say nay. Any abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Good job, Dave.
And D, consideration to approve a letter of support to the request by city of San Antonio District to revise the water quality management plan and amend their designated management area, the DMA boundary to include a new wastewater treatment plant location.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Call for the vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye, aye.
And the opposing say nay. Any abstaining?
No abstaining.
You abstaining?
Yeah.
There's one abstaining. Motion passes.
Yep.
I have a motion in the second. Call for the vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye, aye.
And the opposing say nay. Any abstaining?
No abstaining.
You abstaining?
Yeah.
There's one abstaining. Motion passes.
Yep.
And E, consideration to approve and sign that and turnover agreement between the Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center and the City of Globe for site control, structural rounds improvement agreement to complete the bathhouse and site improvements to the City of Globe and the community center.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, as everybody, I think at this point knows that the Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center has been an equal partner. When we were putting together the modifications for the pool, they came to the table with doing the site, the bathhouse, adding the slide. It's almost a three story slide, it's a double slide. And they've been running a parallel contract with structural to our contract with structural. And so they're funding one point nine, we're doing a two point three. And they've been heavily involved with the project and still remain involved with that. As we get down to the, to the very close to finishing construction, it became aware that, I think on both sides, that it'd be more streamlined to have the oversight of both structural contracts under one group of individuals. And so what this document does is it assigns the, their contract to us and all the, that goes with it. The primarily what goes with it is approval of the work, not just, we approve all work to make sure it's to code. But this would be approved to the quality that it's done right as an owner would be. And it eventually will be our property also because it's on our site. But the, the contract and the work they're doing is prescribed to us. We would also, the city would approve the, any billing, that when the bills comes in and there's not much billing left, that we would say, yeah, that was done, it was done correctly and sign off on that. So it's real important and it streamlines the process, gets us through the, through the last phases of that construction. The only, the only change in there is there was a request by the hospital. They would really like to see a shade structure over the grassy area by the splash pad so that moms can watch the kids in the splash pad while they're under the shade, not baking in the sun. And that had been cut from the process. That was important to the, to the hospital. We were not able to, we don't have the money in the budget to do that, that twenty thousand at that point. And the hospital graciously offered to front us the money. We would order it and get it installed this cycle, this season, they would pay for it and then we would pay them back in the future. And so that's another part of this agreement. Other than that, it's pretty, pretty clean. We've had the documents looked over by, by both, by Bill and, and by the hospital. And it just helps us get this project finished faster. And I have to say that the hospital have been, really been a trooper on this. They, they are, you know, they're working with us, they're seeing the construction. They had some concerns about some of the cosmetics of the building. But, and, and, you know, they may have done it differently, but they know that getting this open is a number one priority. And so any, any concern they have, they wanted to put that in our hands. They did not want to cause any delay and that's, this also helps that. They're, they're putting the project first and we thank. Contribution.
Is this gonna happen this year?
This shade structure, as soon as, yes, yeah, as soon as we can get one, if this is approved, as soon as we get one ordered and installed, it will, we will be able, we have the funding now with the signing of this.
The hospital's gonna pay for it?
The hospital pays and we will pay.
And when do we pay it back? How long?
They have, they have down for December of twenty twenty three. That would be in the next budget cycle. It would be more convenient to have it July one of twenty twenty four. It gives us a little bit longer time to get the budget straight, the, the, the budget straightened out and the money straightened out and maybe find some donations or something, but.
Will it be okay if we ask them to extend it?
That would be up to council to, to ask for that six month extension.
Are you recommending that we?
I, it would be easier in the, in the straining out all of the money that if we put that off to twenty twenty four, July one, then we could budget that in the, in the next, in one budget out, one cycle out.
Oh, but this will have to go back to them and come back to us.
The, yes, it would, so.
It's an entire contract.
Yeah, yeah, so we should leave it alone. Yeah. Did we get it signed? Did we get it signed, man? No, okay, let's leave it alone and we'll talk.
You can't make an amendment?
Um, we could, but I don't want to blow up, like, I don't want to cause anything, any, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no.
I think that's.
Yeah, no, we, the sooner, the sooner we get this, I don't have to bring this back in two weeks. It's a very good point, yes, I'm sure.
Now, the other question I have for you, we talked earlier. I would like to see Cobra Valley's problems with item two and item three in the letter. I would like to see that documentation.
Oh, we can, we can show you, we can, on tour, well, I have some pictures on my phone, but it's not easy to share, but. So I will tell you, let me talk about the problems that they, that they talk about in their letter. The, the brickwork, while cosmetically it has, has issues, it was, it was approved by the building official. Inspectors and other people have looked at it structurally, it is sound. There is no structural weakness in any of the bricks and I think, believe even the hospital agrees to that. It is a cosmetic side, the fact that you have rough brick that is exposed even though it's painted. And if you're, if you're paying full price for, for brickwork, there is a standard to, you know, it'd be nice if it had, it was in, you know, very close to perfect. I would not say that the cosmetic side was, was perfect. And so I think that is the, and, and that is where, where the concern comes from.
Maybe I can go out and see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we can, we can, we can take you out there and.
I'm just curious, you know, we have a lot of money on this thing and, you know, we want to make sure it's all code.
Oh, everybody agrees it's within code, it was built, it's sound, the architect was out to inspect and look at it. The architect has no problem on it. The building official has looked at it, he has no problem with it. John has looked at it with a history and so no one is, no one is fearful. And John, did you want to speak to it? Tony, we're, we're within building code, correct?
Yeah, so I came in midstream on this project.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members, just in response to that is that, again, it really had aesthetic issue with the bricklaying. There were some missing drought lines, it happens a lot when, I don't want to say rash, but kind of escalated their ability. They did the job done and so there were some hollow points and that's what I refer to them as. They came in later on, they etched them out, they grounded them out, they reapplied drought to fix it aesthetically. And I think that everybody was, they're absolutely pleased. But as far as reinforcement, foundation work, the linters in the building, the structural aspects of that, I'll speak for the others and like Mr. Jefferson just mentioned, there is no issues structurally to the building. And I think you'll be pleased at this point if you go down and take a look at it to see what's, what the finished project, the product looks like, I think you'd be pleased.
It looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
Go out there and see it. Just a little curious, I'm being nosy.
That's fine, all right. I didn't want to come up here really, so. Any further questions you're making else?
Just, just for the record, there was a comment on my photography.
I guess it would be fair, actually, it's probably not good for me to just sit there and say no comment. But really with any project that we've been following, they have the preliminary punch this, working with the contractor. Any concerns that come up such as these, so we're working through those and then we have to punch this. We, we, we have those meetings, they're, they're actually reacting to that and approaching that and following those. And with any other project, when we get to that point of completion, that's when we would expect everything to be handled. But it has been really cosmetic, a couple of things here and there, like I said, whether it be the drainage or the pumps and everything that has been pointed out in weekly meetings. The continuous meetings that we've had most recently that are overlapping actually is the biggest key to the success of this project. You know, and with the contractors, so I think, I think we're in a good, good spot.
There's a question, I do have a question on the footprint of the shade structure, like dimension.
Oh, John, was it twenty twenty?
It was. The green, the green space that we actually have, that's kind of adjoining the splash pad, it was actually thirty six by thirty six available. The pricing that I've looked at is twenty six by twenty six, only for the fact that there's a reservoir tank for the splash pad and there's also some pipe, all the, all the paperwork runs under it. So I didn't want to extend it all the way to concrete to cover the whole area, but it is, does give a ten foot border surrounding that green space, that way it is workable. But that, that price actually is twenty six by twenty six.
And then there, the other, the other, there was a conversation about seating and I think that would be easy. We have a lot of, we have a lot of seating that we can put in there and, and places for them to, to sit. We have benches, we have chairs and, and so I think we have that handled. And once we roll out and you see all the different amenities we have that Walt will put together for us, so.
So, so will individuals be able to bring their own furniture?
We're, we're still working on policies and we had a policy meeting today, we'll add that to the list. Walt, where are you? Do people bring lawn chairs to?
There'll be more than enough to get past.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Yeah, that's a good, you stumped me there. So, John?
Oh, lawn chairs?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Council, also just to, for correction, I know that the dollar amount was, you know, I think it is twenty thousand dollars. Roughly it was almost twenty four, twenty three for something, just for correction, so it's not, it's gone up that fast. But that's, that's the pricing that I receive for that type of structure. And then also in, you know, the, the chairs, Walt's actually been ordering some stuff. We've got a lot of the lawn chairs already, we've got canopies, we've got benches already on standby, they're getting, they're actually, the chairs are at our public works yard and the canopies and the benches actually, correction, Walt, that they're ready to be delivered. They've actually been, the vendors have been doing us a favor of storing this product. They're already, they're ready to count, we just gotta get to it, having to bring them in. There's also two additional shade structures?
Yeah, ten rows and ten by ten shade structures.
Yeah, so, and those will be able to be moved around. We're gonna, staff will get training on that too as well, putting up, setting them down. Of course Walt will be mindful of monsoon season, that they don't end up in the T-ball fields.
Mr. Vice Mayor, about once a month, the last four months, I've been buying a hamburger and just go out to the park out there and watch the work and watch the improvements and it's, it gets better every time I get out there. It's been, I really enjoy it, just go to the park and have a hamburger and watch the improvements come online.
So, is the announcement?
We, I'm, I did not want to jinx it, I'm very close, I'm, you know, very close, but a couple of people who are wise are saying you may want to just, you know.
The green, the green space that we actually have, that's kind of joining the splash pad, it was actually thirty six by thirty six available. The pricing that I've looked at is twenty six by twenty six, only for the fact that there's a reservoir tank for the splash pad. And there's also some pipe, all the, all the paperwork runs under it. So, I didn't want to extend it all the way to concrete to cover the whole area, but it is, does give a ten foot border surrounding that green space. That way it is workable. But that, that price actually is twenty six by twenty six.
And then there, the other, the other, there was a conversation about seating and I, I think that would be easy. We have a lot of, we have a lot of seating that we can put in there and, and places for them to, to sit. We have benches, we have chairs. And, and so, I think we have that handled in, in, once we roll out and you see all the different amenities we have, that Walt will put together for us. So.
So, so will individuals be able to bring their own furniture?
Uh, we're, we're still working on policies and we had a policy meeting today, we'll add that to the list. Walt, where are you? Do people bring lawn chairs to?
There'll be more than those if you get past.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Yeah. That's a good, you stumped me there. So, John?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Council, also just to, for correction, I know that the dollar amount was, you know, indicated as twenty thousand dollars. Roughly it was almost twenty four, twenty three or something, just for correction, just so we know it's gone up that fast. But that's, that's the pricing that I receive for that type of structure. And then also in, you know, the, the chairs, Walt's actually been ordering some stuff. We've got a lot of the lawn chairs already, we've got canopies, we've got benches already on standby, they're getting, they're actually, the chairs are at a public workshop. And the canopies and the benches actually, correctional, that they're ready to be delivered. There's, they've actually been, the vendors have been doing us a favor of storing these products. They're already, they're ready to count, we've just got to get to it. I haven't been bringing them in. There's also two additional shade structures.
You have ten umbrellas and ten, like ten shoes.
Yeah, so, and those will be able to be moved around. We're going to, staff will get training on that too as well as putting them up, setting them down. Of course Walt will be mindful of monsoon season, that they don't end up in the T-ball fields.
Mr. Vice Mayor, about once a month, the last four months, I've been buying a hammer and just go out to the park out there and watch the work and watch the improvements. Gets better every time I get out there. Just go to the park and have a hammer and, and watch the improvements come online.
So, when's the announcement?
We, I'm, I did not want to jinx it. I'm very close, I'm, you know, very close, but a couple of people who are wise are saying you, you may want to just, you know, leave it out there. Sure. No, bulkhead's going to be here the tenth, I think, is when they're craning it? The tenth?
Yes.
Yeah. What's that?
Thursday.
Th- this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Yeah.
This week, yes.
Yeah. So.
Cool. Mr. Vice Mayor, if there's no other questions, comments, or suggestions to approve assignment and turnover agreement between the Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center and the City of Globe assigning control of the structural grounds improvement agreement agreement to the downtown center improvements, the City of Globe.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Call for the vote on the paper say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, say nay. Any? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. No late agenda items.
Second call of the public?
Anybody on the phone or, we're going to check that quick here. Nothing, nothing for late agenda?
Then call the public.
No, no one.
Two, two meetings ago.
Okay.
Didn't we have to read it into the?
I don't think we did. Is it your, is it council's desire to read that? It's two weeks ago. What's that?
We missed it, correct?
We did miss it.
There was a call of the public, she said, and I guess we forgot, we missed it.
The, no, there was a conversation. Yeah. Yeah. And I, I, I think there, yeah, we, we had a couple of conversations. So, but.
And we're group reports. Financial sustainability for twenty six twenty twenty three. Public safety, April twenty six twenty twenty three. And infrastructure, May fourth. Any other things on that?
And this is for, if anybody on council wants to ask anybody who's on any of these about what was, what was discussed, I will tell you that financial sustainability was primarily about some of the budget and healthcare items. Public safety was primarily about the fire station truck and training, the shooting range. And then infrastructure was primarily about northeast corridor and a lot of the grant money we have. Grant that, that made it into the budget in that respect. So, this is a chance for anybody who missed one of those meetings to ask the others about that or if we can have that conversation.
Uh, we just want to mention a couple of things for public safety. There was a discussion about the risk involved in the installation of speed bumps and speed humps. The county had alluded, or at least we've heard that the county is no longer installing speed bumps or speed humps upon advice from the Arizona County Insurance Pool, which is something we need to, to look at. And so, there was a long discussion about that and how to go about, instead of using those to avoid the risk, how do we deal with high speeds? And we have a reservation for this evening. There are remedies which would cost us some money, but using our cameras that can document speed and implies that tickets can be issued. So, the red camera, I guess, is slang term. It was one method of trying to control speeds. So, we have to take a long, hard discussion and look at that. We had a lot of opposition there because of years and years ago about red light cameras and speeding through the city. A lot of people indicated in the street justice. I was aware that public was not happy with any of that. And yet, we have a person this evening completing a lot of danger speeds on their city road. So, we have to come to terms with that somehow and decide how we're going to enforce laws if the public is going to take those chances. And what's our obligation in that? I think this is legal research moment. Maybe Bill can give us some advice on that. If we're getting complaints about speed, how can we do it? Do we hit them in a pocketbook fashion through immigrants and a mail out ticket? We may have to consider that. So, anyway, that was part of the discussion from, from the other days.
So, and.
It's something we, we probably need to address.
And Vice Mayor and members of the council, I think, Councilman Gonzalez, I think the comments about cameras were not speed ticket cameras that actually generated a ticket, but, but a, a camera that we use for that. So, I just wanted to clarify that we're, we're not, we've had no discussion or any desire to go back to any type of photo enforcement in the way through.
The point of the county not hitting the speed bump or speed hill business that we are, on advice of Arizona County's insurance pool is a point to be well taken and to, to learn from.
And this will be coming back to council because it is a, it was, it was discussed at this level, but it obviously is a, a, a topic for the full, for the full council because of, of the ramifications and.
Yeah, my constituency on, on Lake Street, my constituency on Euclid, Euclid Hill. Those aren't well-designed subdivisions or streets, I get that. But yet, we have a problem today on those streets. I have heard from my constituency, we need to take a hard look, some kind of solution on that, so that's the future of the county. That's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Anybody else?
I'd like to comment on the financial stability. And, and just the one topic that I want to talk about very briefly is, you know, we, some years back, we were challenged with rising insurance costs for, for our employees. And how are we going to cost share employee and employer? Cost sharing of, of rising premiums and everything that goes with insurance and benefits. But I will say that in the last probably three years, four years, and more so, but we started having these committees. We're, we're really getting a good handle on how we can get to where we need to be, where there's equality and where these costs are being controlled. Because they're always rising. And I will say that this go around, I, I think the council's going to be pleased with some of the solutions that we have. I think our staff is going to be pleased, our employees will be pleased because, you know, that is a, that is a very, it's a very touchy subject sometimes for employees and employers because it comes right out of your pocket. But that doesn't eliminate the rising costs. And the way we're handling it now is more efficient, a lot more efficient. And it's, it's well thought out, it's, it's well prepared. I remember, yeah, being on council some years back where we were hit with a presentation saying, all right, here's the rates for this year, what are you going to do? And it was substantial. I mean, we're talking tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars in one year. And so, those were very difficult times for me because, and some of us that were here then, to, to have to make a decision based on a presentation from our insurance carrier. And it's trying to scratch your head and say, well, what do we do? I think now we've got a handle on how we're going to approach these. We've got basically a roadmap on how to work on these structures, handle the structures and how to deal with them and find ways to, to minimize the costs on both employees and employer. So, I think this next time you see, I, I'm hopefully going to be pleased to see the, watch it.
And eleven consideration of future agenda.
The. That would be you guys. I, I will say that we're putting the, the speed bumps will be coming back. That needs that.
That, that's an offline conversation, we'll bring it to county.
Right, and so, I, I don't know exactly when the right time will be, but it definitely does, has to come back because we have a lot of.
Sure.
In both, in both directions.
Okay.
Okay.
Scheduling the meetings?
Nope, no news there.
What do you do, Jerry?
So, me.
Second.